Everybody stand for the pledge and third. Gene, would you lead us in the pledge?
My allegiance stated by the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, united, invincible, liberty and justice for all.
Jason, prayer please.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy, thy kingdom come, thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, lies the power and glory forever and ever.
Amen. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Gene. Roll call, Unida.
Councilor Howard.
Here.
Councilor Lorenz.
Here.
Councilor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Mayor Prophetset Bullock, Mayor Prophetset Bullock is excused for this evening and a quorum is declared.
Do you have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Approval consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Review and approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Unida.
Councilor Howard.
Yes.
Councilor Lorenz.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. We have several pro- proclamations tonight. The first one is proclamation for mental health month. It's no, I'm Terry. City of Montavista, May Mental Health Month proclamation. This proclamation declares May Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Alamos, Montavista, Colorado. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental illness affect mo- almost every family in America. And whereas people with mental illnesses recover if given the necessary services and supports in their communities. And whereas people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and our communities. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year. And whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental health, mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors for people with mental illnesses. Now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor, on behalf of the city of Montavista. Do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty four, as Mental Health Month. As the mayor of Montavista, I also call upon all of Montavista citizens, government agencies. Public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness. Reducing stigma and discrimination and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. There. Unida.
Next proclamation is the fifty-fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Is May fifth, twenty twenty four, through May eleventh, twenty twenty four. Whereas the official, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a timed, honored. And vital part of the local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerks is the oldest among public servants and whereas. The office of professional municipal clerks provides the professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks. Have pledged to be ever mindful of their nu- neutrality and impartiality regarding equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerks serve as informational center on functional of local governments and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration. Of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerks throughout the participation of education programs, seminars, workshops. And annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas. It is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerks. Now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor of Montavista, do recognize. The week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty four, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation. To our professional municipal clerk, Unida Vance, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform. And their exemplary dedication to communities as they represent.
Thank you, Unida. Have fun to have.
Thank you, Unida.
You gonna introduce the next ones, Unida?
Um, I'd like to introduce Danielle Fied from the Delta Center. And the teachers, um, I believe you guys are from the elementary, correct? From Bill Metz Elementary, and I'd like to ask Danielle to read the proclamation for National Teachers Week.
So National Teacher Appreciation Week, May sixth, twenty twenty four, through May tenth, twenty twenty four. Whereas through their dedicated efforts to ensure our children learn the knowledge and skills needed to be successful in higher education, careers, and life. Teachers are vital in helping build the future. And whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas teachers play a crucial role in shaping our children into the people they will become, supporting them through their youth and teaching lessons that. Will have an impact on students they will carry through life. And whereas our community recognizes and supports teachers in educating the children of this community. And now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor of the city of Montavista, do hereby proclaim May sixth through May tenth, twenty twenty four, as Teacher Appreciation Week. And on behalf of the city of Montavista, city council extend appreciation to all of the teachers at Marsh Elementary, Bill Metz Elementary. Montavista Middle School, Montavista High Schools, Byron Searing Delta Center, and Kids Connection. And also to all teachers at Craven and homeschools.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Proclamation for Police Week. Mr. Pino. Officer Pino.
Proclamation, National Police Week, May twelfth, two thousand twenty four, to May eighteenth, two thousand twenty four. To recognize National Police Week, two thousand twenty four, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including those dedicated. Members of the Montavista Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice. And been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the name of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the wall of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Whereas six hundred and nineteen new names of fallen officers have been added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including. Four hundred and seventy-two officers killed in the, killed in two thousand twenty-one. And a hundred and forty-seven officers killed in previous years. Whereas May fifteenth is desi- uh designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers. And their families, and U.S. flag should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Montavista, city council will observe May twelfth through May tw- May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. As National Police Week in the city of Montavista and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community. And in the communities across the nation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Proclamation for Public Works Week.
Before we do the proclamation, I just wanted to introduce our street supervisor at the city council room. This is Andrew Valenzuela. He's a thirty-five-year veteran for the city of Montavista, has primarily worked in our water and sewer division, is now head of streets and parks, so.
Congratulations.
Tonight, we, we brought a few of the guys from Public Works. They were gracious enough to agree to come over here tonight and. Introduce themselves. We have representations from our streets department, Pedro and Alan. We have representatives for our parks, Vic, you guys probably all know Vic. Are from our utilities, uh Junior right here, and then from Fleet, of course, is Dave. So instead of me talking to you guys, I'm gonna let Alan do.
Hello, hello. Okay, pro- proclamation, National Public Works Week, May nineteenth, twenty twenty four. May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructures, uh. Infrastr- infrastructures, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance of. To sustainable and resilient communities in the public health. High quality of life and well-being of the people of city of Montavista. State of Colorado, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services. Could not be provided without the dedicate, dedicated effort of public works professionals who are federally. Mended first responders, and the engineers, managers, and the employees of all levels of the government. And the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation. Parks, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facilities. As assess- the notes, that's the, essentials for our citizens. And whereas it is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children. In the city of Montavista to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing futures and understanding. Of the importance of public work, first responders, and public work programs. And their respective communities, and whereas, whereas the year twenty twenty four marks the sixtieth, sixty-fourth. Annual National Public Work Week sponsored by the, the American Public Works Association. Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Be it resolved, I Dale Becker, Mayor, do hereby designate the week, May nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four. As the National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association. And government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies. Designed to pay tribute to our public work, professionals, engineers, managers. And employees, and to recognize the substantial contribute, contribution. Okay, they make to protecting our nation's health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Harder than it looks.
Well, you did a fantastic job. With all the proclamations read, I'm gonna stand up and applaud all of you for what you use this community. Okay, we will now move to citizen comments, special presentations. Margot has a presentation, and she's welcome to make her comments. I've missed you, Margot.
I have, I tell you, it's good to be not sick and be back and function in real life. Hello, everyone. Good to be here. Um, I am just totally delighted with all of you. You have done such a beautiful job on this city. The parks look good. And, and now with the water going, and we started planning, planning flower, well, cleaning up. We're gonna be planting flowers and, and from our gardens and putting things together. And the city really looks nice. So thank you all for beautiful stuff you're doing. I appreciate, and sweeping streets and cleaning the snow and all that good stuff. It makes me happy to see everybody. And it also makes me happy to see police cars go up and down my street. I always say a little prayer when you go down there, that everybody's safe and sound. But I appreciate that. Even if you're just driving home, it makes me feel good. So, thank you, everybody, and I tell you what, this group of people here. For council has been exceptional. You guys are amazing at what you're doing and how you're working together, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Margot. Is there any other citizen comments? Can't hide behind the phone now. All right. We'll move on to scheduled appearances. Need to be in this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk. No later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So our first one will be Water Court Case Update for Jeff Williamson.
He is on. Good evening, council members, uh appearing via Zoom tonight. I'm gonna try and put up a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, we'll see if this works here. It's not long. I just had a few slides that I thought might be helpful. Uh, not sure if it's letting me. Well, tha- that's okay. We'll, we'll carry on, uh, without them. They're not critical. I wanted to provide an update. As I think most of you know, uh, we have a pending, the city of Montavista has a pending case before the Division Three Water Court. That was filed, uh, way back in twenty sixteen. Um, it's still pending, and, and I wanted to let you know where that stands. It, it was filed after, uh, division engineer and state engineer issued new rules for the use of groundwater valley. And the reason we filed the case at that time was because under the new rules, um. The state applied much more stringent requirements for offsetting depletions from wells. In other words, recognizing. The impact that, uh, well pumping has on the aquifers throughout the valley. And requiring, uh, replacement of the depletions that that pumping then causes to the Rio Grande, uh, system as it leaves, leaves the valley, leaves the state, uh, heading to New Mexico. So the, the Water Court case that we filed really had a few components. Um, in order to replace the depletions from our wells. We need to have, uh, water that can be used for augmentation. That's water you're putting back in the stream system. Um, so one part of the Water Court case is changing, um, the use of existing ditch rights that the city holds in the Anderson Ditch. And the McDonald Ditch, which is actually now diverted via the Prairie Ditch. Um, changing those so they can be used for augmentation, including claims for exchanges so that that water. Can be stored in Rio Grande Reservoir upstream and released, uh, at a later time. And then also allowing the city to enter into contracts, um, with sub-districts or, uh, other governmental entities. To help replace depletion. In other words, if, if we aren't able to use our, or change ditch water to give us the option to have other sources to do that. So that's how the case was filed. It, even though it was filed in twenty sixteen, it, it then sat for several years. While the groundwater rules themselves were appealed. Um, and we waited for that appeal to be resolved, which it finally was, and, and the rules were ultimately approved, um, in twenty nineteen. And so the, the case is really, most of our work on the case has been happening since twenty nineteen, uh, early twenty twenty. Before I go further, I'll just give a quick reminder of how Water Court cases work. Uh, when you file a, a case, it's pending before the water referee. Um, and this, this process is designed, the referee, Nicholas Sarmiento. Um, he really acts as a, a shepherd or mediator to help an applicant like the city. Um, address any concerns that other water users have, and with the hope of reaching an agreed-upon decree. In other words. Um, you know, the ideal outcome is not to take a case to trial, but to understand what concerns other water users have. And to try and incorporate those into terms and conditions that will then govern the use of our water rights in the future. So it's a back and forth negotiated process, um, and the length of time that takes depends on how many opposers. Uh, entered the case with statements of opposition and the extent of their concerns. So since twenty twenty, we've been working with the opposers in the case, and there are a number of them that I'll get into in a minute, um, to resolve their concerns. And then we also amended the application in twenty twenty-two, um, to update some well locations and to also claim. Some portion of our exchanges is absolute because we were able to operate those under a temporary approval. The, um. In terms of where we are, then, you know, I mentioned we've been working with opposers. I, I'm gonna list them off because I don't think I've really. Done this and in a update to you before, and I want to provide some more clarity. That we have now stipulated on behalf of the city with the majority of the opposers in the case. In other words, they have agreed to the proposed decree that, that we'd like to see entered. Those opposers include the city of Alamosa, Colorado Water Conservation Board, Canaihos Water Conservancy District. McDonald Ditch Company, the Rio Grande and Lariat Ditch Company, the Rio Grande Water Users Association, the San Luis Valley Water Conservancy District. And the Terrace Irrigation Company. So we, we work to address ea- each of those entities' head-specific concerns. Um, we've managed to address all of those. So who's left? Uh, remaining in the case are the state and division engineers who did not enter the case until twenty twenty-one. Colorado Parks and Wildlife, which did not get into the case until about a year ago. And then the Rio Grande Water Conservation District, uh, and the Prairie Ditch Company are, are also remaining. Are, to the extent we have, um, remaining concerns, they lie mostly with the state and division engineers. The, the state has had, um, concerns with initially with our change of the McDonald Ditch water right because there's. Complicated history involving the McDonald and Prairie Ditch, and the state had some disagreements about. What the, the lawfully irrigated acreage could be under that water. We've, I think, tentatively agreed on a settlement with them, um, to address that concern and are now just working on some decree language, uh. Relating to the dryup and relating to irrigated acreage, um, under the ditch systems. So. They're the, the major remaining opposer, and we are close. Um, I will add that the division engineer's office, um, in the valley is. Probably the, one of the busiest, uh, division engineer offices in the state, um, dealing with the unique constraints and obligations that's been pu- that's been put on them and the water users in the valley. All, all of that is to say, it, the process in working with them has taken time. It's been compounded by. Significant turnover at the Attorney General's Office, um, during that time. There have been three or four different, uh, attorneys from the state who have represented them. So that's been some reason for the length of time it has taken to, to work with them to address their concerns. CPW, uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, their, their concerns, I think, are more minimal. We're still working to understand exactly, um. What they'd like to see in the proposed decree. They have water rights interests in Rio Grande Reservoir and some exchanges, um, I believe, some of which may not be decreed. And they have some comments, uh, on, uh, terms and conditions. They may want our decree to help protect those operations. I mentioned the Rio Grande Water Con- Conservation District. They've indicated to me they're just simply monitoring the case, don't have significant remaining concerns. And the Prairie Ditch Company, um, is in a similar boat, really wanting to see us reach a resolution with, uh, the state and division engineers before they sign off on it. So I recognize that's a little bit of a sprint. Um, I appreciate your, your patience in, in hearing all of that, but I'd like to take any questions you might have. On, on where we stand and what comes next.
Jeff, uh, Jean Ferry, she's the attorney. Um, so, uh. What do you anticipate as far as, uh, how much further time it may take on this, uh? We purchased this water, and I understand the, the waiting for the decrees and that type of thing. Uh, we purchased it back in twenty ten and ten, twenty twelve. Do you foresee that it will probably take an additional? Year or two, or what, what are your anticipations there?
We, we provided some, uh, revisions to the proposed decree to the, the engineers in February. And I'm still waiting on a response from them. Um, I was hoping to have that. One of the reasons we scheduled this for tonight is because I was optimistic that. We might have reached resolution, uh, with the state, but we just have not gotten there yet. Ge- Gene, I think my hope is to get this case wrapped up by the end of the year, sooner if possible. It's highly dependent on how quickly we can get, um, both of the state agencies that are in this to, to be responsive. And turn things around, but tho- those are the main, um, tasks remaining.
Has the yield projection, uh, changed on this, uh? Any degree since, uh, we were discussing this with Peter back in, uh, early days?
Uh, short, the short answer is yes, and I, I'll, I'll try and keep this high level. It's, we, we don't have Jordan Dimick, our, our technical consultant, uh, on. But we have, uh, had to revise down. The number of acre feet claimed under, or available to us under each ditch right. Um, for augmentation based, based on engineering work that, more detailed engineering work that's been done by Jordan in his office. And also to, uh, reach stipulations with the state, uh, and, and other opposers. And I don't, I don't have the numbers, um, in front of me that, you know, we're, we're still at a level where the. The yield that we should be able to get decreed from the Anderson and the McDonald is still sufficient to meet the demands and, and needs that we need to meet.
We also had some from, uh, the Lancaster, uh, transactions, I recall, too.
Do you recall which, uh, which ditch that property was on?
I don't know whether I have it right off the top here.
We, we did, we did have, um. Well, you, well, you're thinking about that. We, we did have water rates, some ditch rates that were included in the application originally. That we withdrew.
This was one, uh, point five CFS of Anderson Priority Number Ninety with an appropriation date of May the thirty-first, eighteen seventy-five.
That, that water is still in this, that's still in, in this case, Gene.
Okay.
Yeah, the Anderson ditch wa- there's a portion of the Anderson ditch water we, we pulled out, um. To not, not change because of, uh, concerns regarding the evidence supporting its historical place of use. Um, but just a small portion of the Anderson water.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jason? You're the water guy. That's why I look at you here. Anybody else got any questions for Jeff? We really appreciate the report, Jeff. Thank you. We really appreciate the report, Jeff. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, I will continue to keep you updated when, when there are new developments, uh, to report.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, now we'll move on to something else fun. Presentation that the two thousand and twenty-three audit.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Temple and I work with Wall Smith Bateman out of Alamosa and we did conduct your annual audit for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Boy, I can clear a room. Um, I, I have to tell you, this was a, a great audit. We came in and your management had everything put together very well. Um, they were able to answer our questions. Last year, they really put up with a lot from us. A first year audit is just challenging. We get all of our documentation back in order and put together, and so I know we drove these poor ladies crazy. Um, but this year was a different story. I think they could probably tell you the same. So as we went through our audit, we have one adjustment to these financial statements and it is very insignificant. It just happened to be an error that we found, which usually is what happens. Um, but the numbers that you've seen in your reports that came to you after the year end are the same numbers that you're seeing. So I'm not gonna go through the detail of the numbers with you. I know you have other things on your agenda. But I will take a run through just the setup of this audit report and what the different statements mean, if that's all right with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the letter that's in the, on the first page when you open up your bounce copy here. This is the independent auditor's report. And this is the only part of this financial statement that comes from us. The rest of this financial statement is your management's responsibility. So we have audited these financial statements, um, to ensure that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We have issued an unmodified opinion. That's a good, clean opinion. We do believe these financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with those accounting principles. And in general, that just means that any other city that you picked up across the United States, their financial statement's gonna have this exact same setup. They're gonna be recording their activity the same way that you are. So we do follow the standards of our profession to ensure that we can give you this type of opinion. Um, as I mentioned, management is responsible for the financial statements. And our responsibility is to come in and obtain reasonable assurance that these financial statements are fairly stated. And that means free from material misstatement, um, whether due to, uh, fraud or error. So reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute. Um, I think if we looked at every single transaction that went through the city, we'd been chased out of here with pitchforks, but we do a risk assessment and we focus our audit work on the areas that have higher traffic, more transactions. Um, or, and we look at the internal controls across the city. If we come across anything that we consider significant deficiency that could lead to a material misstatement, we would be required to let you know. Um, we do not have that type of a letter to you this year. You have no findings or comments from us. So this audit report is the only thing you'll see from us. Behind the audit report is the management's discussion and analysis. These pages have Roman numerals, one through thirteen. This takes the financial statements of the city and puts them in a narrative form. This is prepared by your management. We don't audit this information. Um, but we do go through and make sure that the numbers are put in here, match the numbers that are in the following statements. Uh, we also make sure that the correct information is included. The basic financial statements start directly behind that. With those back to whom four and five. Um, the first two statements here are what we call the government-wide financial statements. This basis of accounting is full accrual, so you'll see all of your capital assets here and all of your long-term liabilities. This basis of accounting is not the way you manage, so the funds are presented right after this. But these statements are included to give you a big picture of what's happening in the city. The information here is for one year. There are comparisons to the prior year back in that management discussion and analysis. And I think that's the best place for you to look and really compare what's happening from year to year. On pages six, six and seven, six and through eight. These are the fund financial statements. So you'll see here the governmental funds on page six. And this is everything except your water and sewer funds. So then the major funds are presented here and that is driven by the dollars that run through these. So every year we take a look at the major funds and make sure that they're separately presented if they reach a specific threshold. Um, your general fund, your one cent sales tax fund, the capital projects fund, and the capital improvement funds are considered the minimum funds of the city. The other governmental fund detail is presented behind the footnotes. There's a separate section of supplementary information for those. These are, these statements are presented, excuse me, um, the same way that Anita prepares them for you on a quarterly basis. They're the same, um, presentation. So these numbers have not changed. This basis of accounting is called modified accrual and it's in line with your budget. So the same way that you're budgeting here, when you buy something, buy a, a vehicle, it's an expense in those funds. It's not an asset as you'd see in a business. We bring you back to that on those full accrual statements. But it's important to know the difference. So when you're looking from a cash basis, where are our funds and how are we spending them? These are the statements that you're going to be looking at. On page ten starts the statement, the statements for the proprietary funds. So these are the water and sewer funds. Because they act like a business, they're full accrual, um, all the time. So the same numbers you see here on those very front statements. So that's pages ten through twelve are those proprietary fund statements. And beyond that are the notes to the financial statements. For all of the numbers that are in those statements and how those are prepared and what basis of accounting, there's a good description here of how those are derived. It's also very good bedtime reading if you can't fall asleep. There's additional information behind the footnotes. They're not part of the basic financial statements, so there's varying levels of assurance that our audit gives. Um, we do make sure that all of the information that's presented in those statements flows through to the front statements. Um, but they are presented at a different level. So you'll see your budget to actual statements back here and some of those combining statements for those smaller funds. That's the financial statement in a nutshell. Do you have any questions or do you want me to look at any numbers with you?
Not yet. Well, we'll call you. Give you the number.
Go ahead, go ahead. We're in phone book. If they have them anymore.
Good job, Anita.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, so it's been a real pleasure to work with Wall Smith and Bateman and they've been very helpful. Thanks, Kimberly, for coming tonight. And this is Anita's last hurrah. She says she's not coming in after we adjourn tonight. So I wanna give a real hats off to Anita and her contributions to the city this last two and a half years and what she's done and, um, and has proven to keep the city in a healthy financial area. So thanks, Anita.
I think you need to give us one more report.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
I like hearing that kind of good news.
That's the best news. And it's so early. This is, I think, last year just been challenges. We are here a little bit later in the year, but this was pretty early in the year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Needing your speech? That way we're words. All right. Resolution, Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash eight. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Montevista regarding the First Amendment Auditers. Mr. Parrish.
Mayor and Council. Well, this is, this is actually derived from, um, the case that occurred up in the City of Sheridan where, uh, some folks came in. Uh, and they're making the rounds, it seems, it sounds like all over the state. And they come out and make demands upon, uh, the, uh, administrators that are here and so forth. Um, and, uh, so the City of Sheridan, um, told them what, that they couldn't go beyond a certain point. They sued the City of Sheridan, the Sher- the City of Sheridan prevailed in that suit and this order came out of all of that administrative order. We did a little tailoring on this for the, uh, city here. So typically what happens is that, uh, these folks come in with, uh, teams of anywhere from four to ten people. And, uh, they'll come in with cameras and, uh, they'll demand entrance, uh, and so forth, and they like to, uh, take photos people at work and, uh, this kind of thing. So they seem to abide by, if you have standing policies and you have the areas posted beyond which they can't go, then they don't try to usually do that. Um, and, uh, the protocol there is if they come in and, uh, they make demands upon, uh, the clerks and so forth that are at the desk and try to take photos and so forth. They're not allowed to do that and they're given a copy of this policy. If they try to go beyond those areas, then, uh, uh, after they've read this policy, it's been explained to them that they can't do that, then they're allowed to be, um, cited with trespass. So, um, they've been here to Montevista already. They've been to Alamosa. I don't know how many more towns they're gonna try to go to, but this is just, in a way, it's sort of a housekeeping measure to, uh, keep, uh, uh, your, uh, employees safe and not distracted in what they're trying to get done. Uh, and, uh, to, uh, limit the activities. They can do, uh, do things, uh, about, uh, um, passing out literature or this kind of thing, as long as they're not in here doing it and they're not on the public sidewalk trying to interfere with people coming into City Hall. And if they want to have a rally somewhere else, uh, out in the parking lot or something like that, that's not going to interrupt traffic, uh, that's within probably their First Amendment rights. So that's what this does, basically, without reading the whole thing. And it designates, um, the, uh, city clerk, uh, the city manager and the chief of police as the administrators who would carry out this policy because they're here. If anything like that happens, so that's what this is all about. So I would recommend the council go ahead and act upon this.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash A, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Montevista regarding the First Amendment Auditers. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash A. Resolution by the City Council of the City of Montevista regarding the First Amendment Auditers. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash eight, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Montevista regarding the First Amendment Auditers.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance, uh, second reading of ordinance nine, nine two six. An ordinance directing codification of an amendment to the Montevista City Charter passed by the Montevista City Election on November third, two thousand and fifteen concerning publication by title only of city ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, this is just the second reading of that ordinance that was brought up last time, past first reading, and it's, uh, really a housekeeping measure to just get this into codification. It's never really been codified, so this was passed by the people back when several years ago, I think around two thousand and fifteen or something like that.
Make motion to approve ordinance number nine two six. Ordinance directing codification of amendment to the Montevista City Charter passed by the Montevista City Election on November third, two thousand and fifteen concerning publication by title only on second reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconding, seconded to, uh, have ordinance number nine two six, an ordinance directing codification of an amendment to the Montevista City Charter passed by Montevista City Election on November third, two thousand and fifteen concerning publication by title only of city ordinances. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Hi.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty-six on second reading and ordinance direct directing codification of an amendment to the Montevista City Charter passed by the Montevista City Election on November third, two thousand and fifteen concerning publication by title on, only of the city ordinance.
And we'll move on to staff proposals, reports and actions. City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of things for you guys this evening. Um, first of all, the CML dinner is May twenty-first and I need to know who's going and I need to know that this evening.
Want us to send to, send you an email or something?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
And are you gonna bring a guest?
I will confirm that a little bit later.
Okay, if you'll just let me know before Monday, by the end of Monday.
That's okay.
Okay, um, then just a couple of things that I need to have cleaned up. So with Anita leaving us, um,
She's back though.
She's back for her final report. Modification to the agenda. So in order to get the, um, our financial institutes and get the finance director on it, I do need a motion tonight to remove Anita Kenzie from us, from our financial institutes and replace her with Judy Phillips as our new finance director. So I do need an official motion and a second.
Who, who are your banking folks?
Um, so we have RG Bank, Sunflower Bank, San, San Luis Valley, bed, and then Colorado. And we don't have to name each one of them specifically. We just have to have the financial institutes.
I make that motion, remove Anita.
And put Judy and add Judy. And it's been seconded.
Who else is on it, on the signature cards?
Um, myself, Dale and Victor.
Depends on who we can chase down more. Been moved and seconded to remove Anita Kenzie off of the financial and add Judy Phillips to them. Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Motion carries to remove Anita Kenzie from our financial institutes and add Judy Phillips as our finance director.
You're gonna filibuster there, just. I was thinking about that, you know what I mean?
Stripper of the devil, probably starting now.
I've seen that look before, and I didn't want to deal with it.
And then the other thing that um, I would like also to make a decision on is um, our July fourth meeting. Um, council's meeting falls on July fourth. City Hall is actually closed that day, so if you all want to meet that day, where?
Both of you here with.
I just assumed not, but.
I would say that. Let's not know what to me, I'd say we could. Do that. Just go to the second meeting, July. Is this the one meeting, July? Just had one. Either that or a lot of big barbecue fireworks here.
Yeah, so why don't we just have one meeting, so it'll be on the third Thursday?
Yeah.
And of course, if there's anything of. Urgency, we will be in touch with each other, so.
Any motion, resolution, just nod of the head?
Um, I think we can just go ahead and go with a motion, please.
No, July.
July fourth. So do you need a motion, please?
I make a motion to have only one meeting in July on the third Thursday is the first Thursday is fourth of July. Second.
Uh, question, I was then moved and seconded. Is there any uh? Does that fall in during stampede?
No, it's the week after, it'll be July the eighteenth.
Been moved and seconded to have just one meeting in July, would be the third week of, third Thursday of July. Any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to have one meeting in July. Um, and then the last thing is I just wanted to let you all know that I did hire a deputy clerk and she will start next Wednesday. Um, I hired Sarah Doyle. So she will be starting with us next Wednesday.
Yeah, I had a motion on that today.
I have a motion on that.
She got a badge.
Does she get a badge?
Thank you, a real big one. Thank you, Unida, Rob, Public Works.
No, we're writing reports tonight, um, real quick, um. Public Works were in full summer mode, so we are turning the water on in the parks, um, trying to get the. The new supervisor up to speed, he's doing a really good job, I'm really happy with Andrew. He is doing fantastic, very happy with him. Um, on the water side, we are putting water and sewer taps in. We have five new taps that have come down through the Rural Housing Development Corporation. But we're in terror to the soul, so we're in the process of putting those in. We did find this week a sinkhole that turned into be a. Bored um sewer line, somebody, one of our companies um. Put a bore through a residence sewer line, also, we got that fixed, we got them back. Uh, we got it fixed the same day we discovered it, so everything was good there, but it just kind of on us, what's that?
We get it.
See ya. They came back and fixed it.
That was after they bored our, the fiber line?
Yeah. It was the fiber of war. They went right through, I'm just worried of other residents on that street because they're all about the same.
Yeah. Because the gas contractor bored this yellow line.
Oh, did they?
They did.
Oh, that's funny, so, yeah, they're all about the same depth, so hopefully. We won't have another sinkhole.
Because it stinks.
What's that? It's a big stink, it is. Um, other than that, we're, we're still trying to get fully staffed again, we're officially um, two down. Hopefully, we'll have a, a start on the one next week, hopefully. Everything comes back good and we are back to the drawing board on our wastewater utilities one position, so we're gonna start advertising. Other than that, if council has any questions, um. I did start a program for noxious weeds, I mean, we adopted the plan. We're gonna go through and do a little more formal stuff in conjunction with. Castillo County and Rio Grande County weed districts, um, trying to get everybody on board. So, we're, we're working with the north center ourselves, we're all gonna kind of collaborate. Just going on, noxious weeds a little stronger than what we have to.
How about the ones up front?
Those are the ones too. We got lots of them, so, questions?
Thank you, Rob. IT, awesome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for your sweet as per usual, but this month for IT, it was relatively busy, a lot of it was back and stuff, I can't clean up as we've been preparing to hire on. A lot more people. Uh, we had six new hires come on recently, like within the last week, uh, one of them, of course, Rob mentioned, is no longer with the city. So we have five new hires currently on the backend and possibly looking at a couple more soon. Uh, we had a new piece of software for the PD installed, it is for their analyzer, this is for them to be able to do testing on pills or whatever else without having to send it off somewhere. We sent back the old DL machine, our, was our mailing machine, uh, with the new regulations coming in, a new one was kind of necessary, I'm not sure all the backend of that, neither Kenzie might know a bit better. Or one year ago might at least.
About ten years.
Yeah.
It works.
Uh, this adult printer was set back properly after the board replacement, we had to get the motherboard and the printer replaced as it was having some issues of staying awake or being able to be opened back up to print. So we had Gilvins out to get the motherboard replaced and then from there we fixed the network scan, so the network scan folders, faxing. And then all the email scans have also been fixed as well. We installed a mic and webcam into the courtroom for zoo appearances. Along with that as well, we fixed the court system, so that way it is recording again, that way they do have a record of everything going on within court. And then we have Network Jack set up for the scanner in the powder room after the scanner and powder moved into the, into the new little closet over there in the hallway. Other than that, everything else was backend, continued security fixes and patches. And everything else, we are rolling into pushing out computers and getting all that set up. So hopefully, everything will be replaced soon, that needs to be replaced, and from there. Are there any questions?
Me, me either.
Alrighty, thank you, guys have a good night.
Thank you. City manager.
Hey, it's just been another busy week and farewells, thanks for attending, um. Chief Dean Felder's going away, there's a nice article in the paper. Thank you, Maria. And um. And then we had, department heads had a very nice lunch, I think, with Anita this week and. With some good Billy laughing. Um, we, Shannon and I are gonna be conducting a second interview tomorrow for police chief. And I've just, I'm just including some of the officers, and so we'll have. A nice, hopefully, conversation, and then the other candidate couldn't make it, so we'll do that again then the next Friday as well, and hopefully be able to have an announcement and. And get on with that. Eugene Ortega, Sergeant Ortega is doing a great job his interim and has taken on that responsibility. We do have one officer. Who has been, who is with the National Guard and will be deployed for a year. So we'll be having to. Make some accommodations and, and get that figured out.
Who is that?
Well, I don't know his last name, so don't ask.
Leo Rovis.
Leo Rovis, and he's one of our new, newer officers that went through the. Through the post-training and was hired last year.
I did not realize he was military.
Yeah. Not cool? Would, I think tomorrow, he's, or well, Monday, we'll be able to find out where he's having to head off to, so. Um, last Friday, I was invited by um, several of the. Ministers, pastors in the community, and we had a real nice conversation and. You know, they, I appreciated the outreach because. Like back when we had the fire two years ago, April twenty second. The one that stood out and stepped forward was with the Nazarene Church Pastor Chris Yocum. And so it was nice to meet those with the Methodist. The Episcopal. The Bowlin Church, uh, the Catholic Church, so, and so they were there to offer assistance and, and have a. You know, I, I network, so I liked that a lot. And then we've got, we're finally getting the exterior of the building finished up, so. The front painting is done, I believe, they're still touching up um, handrails and such. The back doors are painted and we still have a door that needs to be replaced. Rob's working with Excel to get a little bit more light in the police area where vehicles and such are kept. So we're, we're moving. It's looking good. And car gets been ordered, so, yeah, scheduled for August. And so thanks to Nita and Rob, they've been in here on like little, like little elves painting over, over the weekend, so. All right, any questions?
Me, thank you.
Have to ask. May I say something? Please?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, uh, I was at church Sunday and the pastor mentioned. How awesome it was to have you come and meet. The pastors there and how much they learned and what a joy it was, and I just wanted to.
Thank you. So I enjoyed it too. I filled them in on, one of them had said that they didn't think we had much going on in, in the city, and I was like, okay.
And were quite surprised. So, but they really were pleased.
One or two, she had that, you wanna fill in on MMOF real quick, since you've been meeting right early on in?
Um, so a couple of projects, MMOF, that's our multimodal sidewalk project going from Sky High over to the Alta, basically the railroad tracks. We've had our first um, major meeting with CDOT and everyone, as far as design, we've hit the thirty percent mark. So we had a huge meeting with CDOT representatives, environmental, um, design engineers, everyone. Um, we walked the entire project, we discussed property issues, temporary easements. Um, we are in the stages of finalizing all of those, getting all of the actual legals for the temporary easements submitted to CDOT for approval. The accesses are being submitted for approval, um, a lot of our businesses and current accesses haven't been officially. Recognized by CDOT, so through this process, we're gonna go ahead and do that and have. We're not gonna change any of the accesses the way they currently are. Um, but we're gonna go ahead and file the paperwork to have them formally recognized as accesses in the highway system. So we're doing that, um, hopefully within a couple of months. We will be at the ninety percent and we'll do our final big term meeting and we'll be ready. To button everything up if, towards the end of this year. And we are looking to bid the project for construction, January through first quarter of twenty twenty five with an actual construction date of spring of twenty twenty five. So we are on track, um, like we should be. Um, the other project that we have going in public works other than our street project, it's, they actually poured concrete today. So covering gutter went down today on our Baton Rouge and Dennis project. And then we have started design on the alleyway. Survey has been completed, our crews assisted um, SGM with the survey work, we did the potholing of the utilities within those two alleys. Um, so we've got that, they've got all the data they need and they are in full swing of designing that project, so. We are hot and heavy into projects right now, things are moving very well.
And you want to mention the letter we have posted to them on Facebook?
Yes, the, the closures, is that what you mean? Oh, yes. The other one, um, so a lot of our citizens have been receiving a letter that has Excel's um, logo on it. And it's actually from a company called HomeServe. And they are soliciting um, folks for electrical, exterior electrical, and then they mentioned water and sewer. Um, for citizens, I went ahead and published a letter. Um, that basically says this is an insurance, it's not a scam, it is an actual legitimate insurance and they buy rights. With Excel to use their logo, they also do it with Black Hills Energy and a few others. Um, they actually pay those companies to use their logo, so when you see partnership. That's what the partnership means, it's just they bought it, it is an insurance that you could purchase. Um, the city does not endorse or recommend that you do purchase it. I would first suggest that all residents check with your own existing homeowner's insurance to see what's covered, so the primary thing on that letter. Top of meter housing and the mast where the electrical lines actually come to the home is not being covered by Excel, which they are not. Um, but a lot of times your homeowner's insurance policy does a, a warranty those. Um, but I would check with your homeowners before you go through and try to purchase this through that company. Um, same with your water and sewer, um, the city's. Code re- says that from the curb stop or meter pit to the home is the responsibility of the citizen. From the curb stop out to the street or to the city main is the city's responsibility. And likewise on the sewer line, from the tap out in the alley or street. All the way to the home and inside the home on the sewer is the responsibility of the property. So if something were to break, then those were your responsibilities.
I would grant you that.
Yeah.
Water meters.
Yes. So depending on where they are, if they're in the house or under the house, the meter itself is property of the city. The actual housing and everything else is a property. So if you develop a leak anywhere other than the meter. It is the property owner's responsibility, the city warranties and works and maintains the actual meter, but not any of the housings or anything.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm thinking you were, I'm gonna have you write my reports for me.
Another exciting part, though, about the new water meters, remember a month or so ago, we had a meeting with Will Dan and. We had, we discussed potentially having to borrow money. And I said, let's don't sign the contract yet. Though, even though we're working with them, so we can see if we can bridge the funding. And so we should hear in, by July, if we did get the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant, which is like one point two million. But ahead of that, then, we heard from the Department of Local Affairs that we are, we have, they have committed one point one million in funds. To match that one point two, which means. No loan for the city. So this is, this is big for the city, for our taxpayers, um. For our water, water fund, so. We just need the Bureau of Rec to come through, the other thing I wanted to point out is that for our next meeting on May sixteenth. We have published, published size that there will be a public meeting that you guys will hold. In regards to the potential closing of Highway one sixty in Faraday Street. And then Highway one sixty in Franklin Street. And so we'll invite the railroad, they said that they would be here as well and to talk about their reasoning and why we're doing this, and then, um. So you'll get to hear from the citizens if, if they care, I did ask DJ, instead of just sending a letter to. Far- Faraday Street there is really short, so there really isn't a lot of homes that it will potentially impact. But on Franklin Street, instead of just going with that first immediate block, I said, let's take it and notify the neighbors all the way down to Sixth. Because they're the ones that are probably using that. So we might have a room for.
Be great to have crowd. Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Rob. Uh, council committee, city commission and council reports. This is Lawrence.
I'm good.
Mr. Howard? I, I know. It's like I pick on Margot and everybody's tight-lipped. Well, I, again, will say for all the proclamations, that was awesome that them people were here to read them and share them. And thank you to everybody, because those proclamations are very important and everybody that does what they do. And Anita? Thank you. Appreciate you. Welcome, Judy. Nita, you're not leaving completely. You'll just act, you'll have coffee.
At the Nita where she's going to work tomorrow.
Where you gonna work for? Okay, I'm kidding now. I thought you were telling me to be quiet. All right, with that, we will recess the meeting to July, or excuse me, May sixteen, six P M, City Council Chambered to Monty Strong.
I think that was, that was the motion that was made, that we would have one more meeting in July.